Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all and all.
Good morning, welcome, good morning, good evening, welcome to the September 12th planning board meeting. We're going to adjust the agenda today because of some conflicts. Jack, you can, you can get up first with, on a regrading application for 75 Wixson Pond Road. That's number six on your agenda. And Mike, I don't believe you had any comments, did you?
I don't.
And Pat, would you mind reading in Rich's if you don't mind?
Sure. This is an application to regrade a front yard. The materials have already been delivered to the site. The manifests have been delivered. It's about an eighth of an acre that's been modified. Rich is concluding that there are no engineering comments and that the applicant's been working with the engineering department.
And Pat, yourself?
No issues with this at all, Mr. Chairman.
Let me open up to the board with questions. Did anybody reduce soil samples?
I'm sorry?
They've been submitted to engineering. I'm assuming Rich has looked at them, that's, and he's concluded that there are no issues.
Jack, do you know if Rich has looked at the soil samples?
Yes, there was a manifest submitted and it came from a reputable company and he, what he did was, one side of the driveway would get poned and he leveled it out so that he could...
Can you speak a little louder, I'm sorry?
Yeah, he just leveled the driveway a little bit and he is, the gentleman who owns his house is FDNY, not that that matters too much, but, I mean, he's, he's a good guy.
Comments from anybody?
I just, I'm sorry, Pat, you said Rich's memo said that he did...
That material was submitted to his office and he's signing off on the project.
I'm, I'm fine.
He would just like to...
Comments from anybody?
No comments.
You know, I, I think it's okay in this case to get this in front of a public hearing, see what the neighbors think, see what the neighbors have seen, and by the time we do that, we don't need to slow this down, we'll hear from Rich again, Rich will be at the next meeting. So, if no one has any objection, we need a motion to schedule a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Jack, you have another regrading application at 108 Barrett Hill Road. And Mike, no comments, Mike and Pat, would you read in Rich's?
Yeah, this is one where there's some leveling of the backyard in this case, about seven, 7,500 square feet of disturbance. Rich has concluded that all engineering issues have been addressed.
And Pat, yourself?
I have no issues on this either, Mr. Chairman.
So, again, this is going to be, with our regrading applications, as Anthony pointed out, we're concerned with the fill is clean. In some cases, we've had, had the fill removed after it was installed. Jack, did you submit to Rich on this one also?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
So, Jack, with the application, there was a, a letter dated 12/19/22 from Oval Tennis? I'm not sure. Oval Tennis, okay. Is that the, the only letter for, or proof of the quality of the fill?
Yes, and that also came from a reputable source. And Rich was, Rich had reviewed it and he was fine with it.
Rich, okay. Did they do any samples?
No, it was clean fill.
Okay. Now, is Rich satisfied then?
Yes.
Yeah, if they get clean fill to start with, if it's tested before they bring it and they have the manifests and stuff, that's okay. If they dump it and we catch them, then we ask for it because we don't know where the dirt came from.
Right. No, it just seem, it doesn't seem like that much info in this...
I think because it came from a, it came from the place in Somers, correct?
Yes.
It came from a reputable...
Somers.
Yeah.
All right. As long as you guys are satisfied.
Mr. Parker, yeah, we can schedule, we can move this along. Great, well... Yeah, I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jack. All right, now we're going to get back to the, all right, and that was first on the agenda, the mono auto body, 255 Route 6, site plan. Good evening.
Michael Picarello, M.A.P. Architects, apologize for last month not being here, there's some confusion in our office about what was, what was completed as far as the, the meeting, so...
Mike, I believe Mike had some comments?
Yeah, just that the notes on the plat were changed to reflect 15630 where they were applicable, which was good because the original submission only had the zoning district requirements and the variances were granted by the ZBA and they are noted on the plat.
Mike, I, I agree with you on the property has been cleaned up and, and the fence in the back.
Yep, because it started to, with being overgrown, it's starting to like grow out towards the road, so that's something we spoke about earlier.
Pat, would you summarize Rich's comments?
Right, so my comments on this, Mr. Chairman, they've done a good job of addressing all the outstanding issues. The zoning board was the last sort of subjective issue that needed to be addressed, they've got that variance. Rich has some substantial comments, they are typically comments that would be conditions of approval, it's the submission of a SWIP, it's details on stormwater management, erosion control, those sorts of things. None of them are substantive issues that would affect the site plan in any way, so I think this is one that can clearly go to public hearing.
Comments from the board?
This property has been cleaned up nicely. And that rear fence, you'll address, where it's being overgrown and...
Yes, my client will, yes.
No issue. All right, as long as the fences take care of it.
Schedule a public hearing?
Will you, at some point, have any rendering of what the addition's going to look like?
It was submitted in the past, I, I don't know if I have a copy with me, but yes, it was submitted several, I mean...
You saw, you actually had some comments on it, they addressed your comments specifically, Anthony, so...
That was quite a few weeks, quite a while ago.
A few months ago, but...
All right, if you can have it when you come back.
Absolutely, yeah. No problem.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, nice job, this project.
All right, thank you.
A little bit, you're close, you're 90% there. It's that last 10% that's tough to, to close on.
And the property's 90% better than it ever was.
Yeah.
So much better.
Agreed. Thank you.
Because of Joe.
Next on the agenda is Pipeline USA Realty Corp., 186 Myrtle Avenue, site plan.
Advocate proposes to build a 1,920 square foot three bay warehouse for the existing plumbing establishment on Myrtle Avenue. Property is currently a mixed use, two apartments in the plumbing business, therefore an expansion, the expansion necessitates a use variance from ZBA, it would anyway because it's a residential zone. There are 1, 2, 3, 4 area variances required from the zoning board of appeals and provide floor plans of the existing structure, just so I can ensure the compliance with the code. And what's in that large fenced in area that straddles the two properties? Are there easements, are they, should there be easements? I just can't tell what's in there.
The, the enclosure up on the hill is, it's just an enclosure for the applicant to have his dog run around. They have permission from the neighbor, it's, it's nothing formal, it's just a wire fence that happens to go across the property line.
Where does that, that crosses over onto the neighbor's property?
There's a wire fence that does cross over, so this is just an open field, there's just a wire fence that does, it does in fact cross the property line. Both neighbors are aware of it, they understand how it's used, again, it's just an enclosure where the applicant's dog runs around.
So you can get an easement from the neighbor?
If that's necessary, potentially.
Yeah.
I would think so.
Okay.
I would think so.
We'll, we'll probably just move the fence then.
Either way, whatever you want to do, but if you're not going to, it would be good to. Anything else, Mike, Joe? Pat, you mind reading in Rich's comments, please?
Would if I had them, I don't have them, so let me, let me jump to mine. That's me. That's me, I got my comments, but I don't have Rich's, there.
I have.
General comments, detailed comments, let's see where he cuts to the chase on this. It doesn't look like he has specific, so let me jump to my comments, these are a lot of details, typical engineering details that are required in the plans. So what this is, is the plumbing business is proposing the construction of a warehouse building behind that existing bill, I'm sorry, I'm done with it, behind the existing pipeline building that you, you're probably familiar with. Right now, there's parking in front of the building and there's a fenced area behind that where they would modify that area, build the warehouse and add a new parking area behind the existing building. That's a benefit, because if you pass there, a lot of the pipeline trucks are parked in from the building, this is a residential zone, if the, the opportunity exists to put the commercial vehicles in the back of the building, that's a benefit. The, a couple of primary issues with respect to this, why, so what's going on in the warehouse building, how's that going to operate? That's, that's a concern for two reasons, number one, if the intensity of the use of the business is expanding, in other words, they're adding 100 employees and that's why they're expanding, that's an intensity, expansion of the intensity of the use of the property that we would need to understand, again, this is a residential zone. If they're cleaning up the existing operation and making it more efficient, that's a different story. The other primary issue with respect to this is if you've been past the property, the, this pipeline and the adjacent auto body shop shares a driveway and to get to the new driveway, you're going between the two buildings. It's a little narrow, so we'd want to have the fire department comment on the adequacy of emergency access to the back of the building, but if that warehouse is accommodating lots of deliveries of large equipment and so forth, how does that work? Is this, is the area sufficient? So understanding how that, that shared driveway works is something we have to get a handle on, because there's just not a lot of room between the two buildings. So gaining that understanding is important. The parking requirement, you utilized a light impact industrial use for what I think is the office use. So clarify, if it's an office use, you'd need two more spaces, if it's that light industrial use, the parking requirement is accurate. Even if it requires two more spaces, there's plenty of room behind the building to add two more spaces probably and avoid a variance if that's necessary. There's an off-street loading space that's proposed, so apparently there will be deliveries to the warehouse building in the back, so again, Adam, understanding how that works is going to be something we need to understand. Let me finish up and then you can have the microphone. There are, there's a retaining wall that's necessary so the property, there's a change in grade behind the property, so there would be a retaining wall that's necessary. It's shown on the plan as seven feet high and our residential zone, our maximum height is six feet high, so either reduce, regrade, make that work, or stagger the wall, whatever. Again, the technicality here is it's a residential zone for the commercial use. Stormwater management, Rich's comment about that, no sewer water to the warehouse building, just electric, so it really is a warehouse building. Couple of minor comments on landscaping, they did for the warehouse building, it does have a peaked roof, it has dormers, so they've gone to provide some sense of a residential building in the commercial district, which is beneficial, but again, as your responsibility is the architectural board, you want to take a look at it. So they, that's not a, just a standard fair metal building, they've gone a step above that, so they should be commended for that. So those are my comments.
Adam, before we open up to the board, I want you to address a lot of Pat's comments, because there's a lot of the same comments I had, what are you planning on doing? I don't think you're building a 2,000 square foot building just to put the vans in, you know, so...
Partially, but yeah, so this is going to be a storage building now, so with regard to the question about the intensity of the use, so the applicant currently, the way that the existing building works is yes, there's parking in the front, that parking is to remain, yes, there is an existing driveway, it's a shared driveway, then there's an, there's an easement that runs between the two properties.
Do you know the width of that off the top of your head? It's pretty narrow.
It's, it kind of is what it is, there's two existing buildings there and it's functional for the applicant's operation now, and that's really not going to change with the addition of this, this, the storage building. Let me see if we have a dimension here. It's going to be something in the neighborhood of 15, 16 feet. Again, it's between two existing buildings, they've been operating with that driveway for years and years, nothing is really going to change with regard to that operation or any need for that to be wider. So the existing building, again, has the parking in the front that is to remain, the existing driveway, again, it's shared driveway, is to remain, there is a parking area in the back of the site, it's kind of an informal paved area that will be somewhat regraded and formalized. The building itself, again, this property is oddly enough in a residential zone, as, as Pat mentioned, which is odd in that it's pretty consistently and densely in that part of Mayipack Falls, mixed use, commercial, so it's just, it's just kind of an odd zoning designation, but we'll come back to that. The use in the existing building is on the main floor, there, it's, it's the applicant's business, he does have a small kind of office area and the rest of it is really storage. So we'll take, we'll take another look at the parking count, we'll get a square footage per Mike's comment about a, a simple floor plan, so we can get square footages and we'll calculate it against that, we'll, we'll look at the 200 per parking space for the office and 1,000 for warehouse, and we'll just look at it both ways, and we'll, we'll come up with it, with a new number. That's on the main floor, and I do want to point out that, as I said, there's a small portion of it that's office, the rest of it is storage for the applicant's business. He also rents off-site storage space, and so the creation of the warehouse is really to eliminate this need to rent off, off-site storage space to store the rest of his, not really equipment, but the rest of his materials for his plumbing business. So that, that need to rent additional space would go away and, and the excess storage would be in the, in the warehouse, and there would be potentially a vehicle or a piece of equipment that might also go in there occasionally. So that's kind of the, the proposed use, I'll, I'll say that there are two accessory apartments that was mentioned, so it's, it's a mixed use building. Again, we're in this residential zone, so there are these use variances, or there is a use variance in, in a handful of area variances that are required, but I want to make sure it's clear that there's no area variances associated with the proposed project. So the, the proposed warehouse meets all bulk regulations. I think that kind of covers it, Jack, Pat mentioned, there's no water, wastewater connections, this is a dry building. And let's see if there's anything else I wanted to mention. So, all that being said, this is really a very simple project, it's a warehouse building in the back of an existing building, you're not really going to see it from the road, the complicating factor are the variances that are required, so we're hoping to respond to any comments, questions that you might have, and then as efficiently as we can move to the ZBA because that's more of the pivotal step in, in this process.
The pre-2002 code allowed commercial uses in the residential area in Red Mills, in that area right there, so they were allowed on that R4030 zoning district, so that's how you got those few uses that are there.
Right, and that's what, in my mind, a big part of the issue is we're expanding commercial use in a residential area.
Yep. And I believe the loading space is there because you have a requirement for it, right?
That's right. Right, we're not anticipating regular deliveries from large trucks, the loading space is shown on the plan because we're required to show a loading space.
So to Pat's comments and also mine, nothing on this project gets the trucks from being parked out front of the building.
Well, there'll definitely be more opportunity for them to park in the back, we're going to formalize the parking that's there, there is the potential for a vehicle potentially to be put into the garage, but the, the parking area that's back there now is really just kind of a blob of asphalt. That's going to get formalized into, into formal parking spaces, and so those vehicles, and I could talk to the applicant, but we could probably prioritize that, those areas, as I think he already does, those areas in the back for fleet vehicles and the front would maybe just be for employee, you know, passenger cars.
Can we open up to the board?
What about the people that live there, where do they park?
They generally park in the back, right?
The employees, when they come in?
No, the people that live there.
The apartments, the two apartments, where, where...
They park in the back.
So maybe you could flip-flop that and try to get the residents to park in the front?
It's less convenient because the entrance is in the back, the entrance to the residential piece is in the back, the, the front is, you know, where the main entrance to the commercial piece is, so employees will come in, park in that, in those spaces, there's a, there's an employee or two that are, that's there fairly regularly through the day, they'll have their car, the rest of the, of the employees that do park at the site will generally park, take a fleet vehicle, leave for the day to go work and come back and get their car. To bring the residential component to park in the front would probably not be convenient, but we can, we wouldn't likely want to formalize that we can't have, you know, company vehicles in the front, but we could certainly, you know, talk to the applicant about prioritizing keeping any trucks or anything like that in the back.
What type of impact will this have on vehicle traffic?
None.
Same, same traffic that you have now?
Yeah, so, yep, there's no change in the intensity of use of the site, again, the construction of this warehouse is just for a continuation of the existing business, but, so that he can store more of his materials onsite in the proposed warehouse as opposed to renting off-site storage space.
How about deliveries of those materials?
The operation would be exactly the same.
Use the microphone, state your name. You need to go, to the people watching.
My name is Ed Vitale, how you doing? A lot of the projects that I do off-site, some of the commercial projects, they require a lot of like gang toolboxes, big toolboxes, planning tables, scaffolding and, and tools of that nature, big tools, so when those jobs clean, clean up, a lot of times, if there's another job, I can roll all that equipment right into another one or two, but sometimes there's like a big lull and I have like 12 to 15 big gang boxes that are tall and I have no place to put them. So it's a matter of, so when, when I clean off a commercial project that I'm doing, I usually like, I'll rent like a, like a 20-foot box truck, clear all the tools off the job and then I go and I put it into different storage space, units, depending on what's available. So what I like to do is put all that equipment in there, so it's not really, it's more of a, not for like deliveries of material, usually I get that in the front because I keep my everyday stuff in, in the front, the one garage that I have down front. So it's just for my big tools and equipment, really, it's the whole thing, the whole reason.
Are you the landlord for the residents that rent the apartments upstairs?
Yes.
Have any concern, have they voiced any concern about having all this done in the space they're living?
No, no.
Are they long-term tenants?
They are.
Oh, good.
Yeah, I have leases and all that.
We could, we could bring some photos at the next meeting, but the, the area is really fenced off, so you can see here, there's a fence that really encloses this and it's actually a quite nice space, it's well landscaped, it's private, because you actually come down this hill, there's a, there's a six-foot tall fence and you come down this hill and there's, there's patio areas where they can sit and it's, given that it's in the middle of a commercial site, it's really quite isolated and private.
Yeah, Adam, that's another question, will there be a gate to the back, like has that area being secured? That goes to the question of, of emergency service access, again, it's...
There's no, there's no plans for a gate, no, there's no gate now, and again, the use is going to continue to be more or less the same, there'll just be additional storage space in the back of the property, so there's no need for a gate at the driveway.
How about lighting on a new building?
Yeah, we're showing a couple of just building mounted lights over the doors and I think one site area light, just to, just to give a little bit more light to the, the formalized parking down in this area.
Do you want to add some clarification to that? Are there our residences?
Yeah, I know, to the, to the, I think to the right there's a residence, right?
Uh, yeah, over on this side.
To the left is the other business and then...
Correct, yep, and we'll provide...
The type of lighting will be important.
Yeah, and so it'll, it'll be, it'll be the, you know, we know, we know the routine, it'll be down facing, dark sky, we'll provide a photometric plan.
Will there be storage of any material or equipment outdoors or will that all be in?
I currently have an outdoor storage trailer that's like loaded with like, you know, equipment and ladders, whatever I can fit in there, and I even got some ladders on top, so what I, what I would, my intention is to, if this, if this works out, my intention would be to eliminate that, that trailer, get it off the property and keep everything enclosed inside.
This is the trailer here. So that would be worth some benefits.
So, at the end of the day, this project's approved, how are we leaving it looking better tomorrow than it is today? Every project that comes forward here, we like to say that we've enhanced the appearance or the use, whatever, you know, this isn't a residential, that's what I'm a little bit hung up on, is we're expanding the commercial use in a residential area, so where's the wow factor when people drive by there some days, oh, that looks a lot nicer, whether it's the vans parked in the back or whether it's a landscaping plan or, I don't know if I've seen anything on a landscaping plan.
Yeah, so we're, we did, we did provide just a handful of trees, just to provide some additional privacy in the back because that's where the project is. As relates to the front of the property, there, there's really nothing proposed there. I think generally the, you know, compared with some other sites, the, the site is pretty well maintained, we could potentially look at maybe some landscaping, you know, in the front.
You know, the, the auto body that was just in front of us, they did a little landscaping plan, you heard the comments from Pat and Mike saying, wow, it was pretty nice.
Yeah. We, we could definitely look at doing, doing some landscaping and, and again, you know, the, the parking in the front's going to be formalized and cleaned up a little bit and, you know, we don't have a lot of frontage is a challenge, but we could look at how we could potentially spruce up a little bit around the front, add, add some plantings, again, we don't have a ton of space for that in the front because it's somewhat constrained.
And I'm not looking for the...
Yep.
Well landscaped, but we, we do want something nicer than what it is today.
I'll talk to the applicant, we can see, you know, what we can come up with for something in the front.
I think with, with the parking in the rear of the building, if you're moving all those trucks to the back closer to the new building, that in itself is a cleanup because you're not seeing all the trucks from the road.
Yeah, we'll definitely have, have the spaces formalized and a little bit more parking area than exists out there now, especially given that we're going to be removing that storage container, so that'll provide more room for, you know, for, for more trucks up there and, and fewer up in the front.
Yeah, I'd like to see that documented so that, you know, to Anthony's point, that would be a big improvement, if we can fit it in back there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to the applicant, we'll, we'll make a plan.
Other comments? Adam, I think you're going to have to come back one more time anyways, Rich has like three pages of typing comments here that you need to meet with Rich. We would like to get the fire department out there, to Pat's point, and you can come back with the plan that Anthony just talked about, and I mentioned the landscaping and one more turn of the crank, I think it'll give us more information as to what we would need.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
The issue is, as I said, it's, you know, expanding commercial use in a residential area, and I know that area.
Yeah, and it, and it's been that for quite some time, and I think prior to this it was a park, it was a auto mechanic garage.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to declare, I wanted to clarify that prior to me buying the building, that was the, the auto body shop, that was owned by Bob Demore, the building next door is an auto repair shop, so there's no, there's no auto body shop in that neighborhood anymore.
But you'll lead the way in enhancing the neighborhood. Great, we'll see you back in two weeks hopefully, a month, whenever.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Centennial Golf Town Homes, 185 John Simpson Road. This includes the amended site plan and lot line adjustments.
Hello, Chris Laporta, Pasero Associates. Hello, Chris Laporta, Pasero Associates. We did bring some handouts and a PowerPoint. I haven't done the PowerPoint here before. Rose mentioned there might be an HDMI cable I could hook the computer to. If not, we also have hard copies here that we could hand out.
I guess we can work off the hard copies.
Yeah, we got cables if you need them too.
You probably have a cable over there if you want to operate from there.
If you want to use the PowerPoint, go ahead. It's right behind, we have Mike and Joe even...
I'm happy to unless you prefer not meeting for me to set it up.
You can set it up.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, so I can give you a summary where they are, so as you know, this is, very good, Mike. This has been an application that's been before us for quite some time. There's been a lot of work with the applicant and staff in moving this project along from the technical side of things. As you may recall, there was a lot of concern regarding utility connections, particularly water connections. The applicant's been spending months dealing with those issues technically. There have been a lot of other sort of technical-related issues to get this project in a position for you to make an informed judgment on how to move forward with this. The primary decision you need to make this evening, or as soon as you can, is how we're dealing with SEACR. So to support that effort, the applicant's provided a very thorough submission to you which documents all of their analyses that have been done to date, traffic analyses and fiscal impact analyses and so forth. My memo to you sort of summarized some of the impacts related to this project. Overall scale of things, they're not all that significant. And remember, we're comparing this to a delta between the original Centennial Golf approval and this approval. So issues like physical impacts to the land and so forth, all of those impacts have already occurred by virtue of the Centennial Improvement of the property. So the numbers that you're seeing in terms of impacts aren't all that significant. Again, that's a relative comment and it's a subjective comment, and you'll have to make that decision on how you want to handle this. So the choice you have before you this evening is, and again, the applicant I think is going to summarize everything for you so you have a better understanding, is which route do you wish to take to deal with SEACR? So you have two options, like you always do. Do we want to move toward the negative declaration route, which is what the applicant hopes you do and has submitted all this documentation to support that position? Or do you choose to pause DECTIS and require the submission of a full environmental impact statement? So that's really which road do you want to go down? And that's where we are tonight. You should be starting to make that decision.
Thank you. That's a good old good pack. You know, we could probably do Yankee Land Development first.
They're ready?
Oh, you're ready?
Right. Mike didn't even know how to turn it on. Chris got it up and running in three minutes. How about that?
Perfect timing.
All right, so we're going to hold our comments until we hear the presentation. Might speed things up a little bit.
Okay. We prepared a quick presentation to give a high-level overview and kind of walk through a roadmap of what the project is, explain the applications, and the chronology of where we've been. Actually, we have an agenda on our first slide here, so what we intend to do is go over, and before I start, I'll introduce myself, Chris Laporta, Pasero Associates. I'm civil engineer, and Montserrat Rios is also with Pasero, civil engineer. She'll be hitting the next button on the slides over there for us. Larry Boudreaux with Centennial Golf Properties, and David Lebowitz, and then we have Kevney Moses with Toll Brothers, and George, I'm going to kill your last name.
Allison Drotos.
Allison Drotos. So our project team is here, and we prepared this high-level overview of the project just to catch everyone up. It's a big application. Appreciate everyone's time. I'm sure it took a while to dig through all the documents, and just trying to explain it now, we'll go through an overview, the project roadmap, which is kind of the cover document that we submitted with the whole package to try and explain everything. We have a SEACR assessment, which we put together a table kind of comparing the 1996 SEACR approvals with the current project. Then we'll get into what some of the project benefits are, look at the architecture. At that point, I'll hand it over to Kevney with Toll Brothers. He could present that, and then we can have our discussion about the next steps for the project. So, Montserrat, if you could. Okay, so this is the rendered version of the site plan here. That kind of shows the overview, and it includes a lot line adjustment and an amended site plan approval for, as I mentioned, the 1996 golf course project. And, you know, one of the key components of the project is that the parking lot is going to be relocated from the town of Carmel to the town of Southeast. I'll get more into that on the project roadmap, but what we're going to put in the area where the parking lot was is 63-bedroom townhome units and amenities on a 14-acre parcel. There will be no interruption to the golf course. We're going to, you know, maintain all of the golf holes and the operations. So that's a strong benefit, and we think that this use is complementary to the existing So let's jump into the roadmap here. This was kind of the first page you'd see in our application, and it's supposed to help kind of summarize everything and explain all the packages and tie it all together. So the very first thing is the summary of packages. There was a SEACR package, and then there was three planning board applications. So since they're all the same project under the veil of SEACRA, we prepared the SEACRA package, which evaluates the environmental impacts of the totality of all three of those planning board actions. So in that package, you would find the overarching documents, like the full environmental assessment form, and some that were related to the overall project, like the traffic impact studies, the fiscal analysis, the water and sewer engineers report, and probably others that I included in there. The three applications would be the townhomes site plan, the golf course site plan, and the lot line adjustment. So the townhomes are being evaluated as their own use on their own parcels, so that's why we separated those into their own site plan application. And the other site plan application is related to the amendment to the golf course, where we are relocating the parking lot into the town of Southeast. The lot line adjustment, there's two existing parcels, essentially we're just adjusting the lot lines to fit the project. We have a timeline here that we put some of the key milestones of the project history. In the mid-1990s, the golf course, the golf club was developed, and that went through an environmental impact statement, which resulted in the findings statement, which was issued in 1996. The project consisted of the development of 321 acres in Carmel and Southeast for the 27-hole golf course and clubhouse that's there today. In November of 2021, we introduced our application for the townhomes. At the time, it was a similar but different project. We had 63 units with three buildings, or 12 units, being located on Fair Street. And we, later in November, we separated it into the proper applications, which I just discussed, the two site plan packages and the lot line adjustment. Then January through April of 2022, we made various resubmissions to address technical comments. And in July of 2022, we resubmitted the, at that point, the Fair Street units were eliminated from the scope. The overall unit count was decreased from 63 to 60 units. We eliminated two of the curb cuts along Fair Street, with only one curb cut remaining on Fair Street for emergency access only, which will be gated. We didn't formally appear in front of the planning board. However, we did have meetings in a workshop setting, you know, July 22 through April of 2024. We worked back and forth with the town, the town engineer, and the consultants on the off-site utility needs, and we structured some off-site utility improvements related to the water, which would create a, some looping benefit to the town water district. In May, we resubmitted the townhome package, the golf course package, and the lot line adjustment, and we reviewed the new application, and we felt that it was, you know, generally well-received. And in July, July 29, the packages were resubmitted, and we're awaiting the comments and feedback from the planning board, which we did receive today, and we could jump into that once we conclude the presentation here. The, I did list out the required variances and approvals for this project. So I did already explain items one, two, and three, the two site plan amendments and the lot line adjustment. We also need a few area variances. The first variance would be on our lot line adjustment. There is some language about the transferring of over 20,000 square feet of lot area to require a variance, so that's the first one. The second one would be for the parking, because we are providing the parking, but it's in another town on a different parcel, so that would require a variance as well. We have a area variance for the building spacing. There's a requirement of 50-foot spacing between the buildings. We are, off the top of my head, I think we are 20 or 25 feet. It's similar to, you know, other local projects, and I can get into that on the site plan. I know we have it there. And then we have one more that requires 100-foot setback on all sides of the site, and that one is also a required variance, but it's somewhat internal because where we're not hitting that 100 feet is between the townhomes and the golf course parcels. So we could go into the next slide, Montserrat. This one is a table that we prepared to give a high-level summary of SEACRA. And what we did was we looked at the, some of the key findings of the 1996 FEIS, and then the current townhome project, and we categorized everything in the categories, the proper categories, in the order of the FEAF. Our findings were that we were compliant with everything that was studied in 1996. So I don't know, this is probably a really hard table to read at this scale. I don't know if I should necessarily read this entire table to everybody right now.
I don't think that's necessary, but I think it shows the work that was done in 1996 as far as your environment impact.
Yep.
You know, you studied traffic, you studied traffic again, you studied the waste water and whatnot. So I don't think we need to go through everything that we...
If you remember that that assessment was done, we...
Right, that's exactly, which is the show.
Okay, very good. So we can move on to the next slide, Montserrat. We just wanted to highlight a few of the key project benefits. You know, it provides resiliency to the golf operation. Obviously, I mentioned earlier that we think it's a complementary use. I think a lot of the residents that would be attracted to these townhomes would have a, you know, a strong interest in participating in the golf course. So it contributes again to the resiliency of the golf operations. There's a net tax surplus from the project. We believe that it meets the goals of the comprehensive plan. There's benefits to water infrastructure, upgrades to sanitary services, state-of-the-art stormwater facilities. We did, of course, have pre-application meetings with both the DEC and the DEP on the stormwater. We know that we're in the DEP watershed, and, you know, it's always a best practice to meet with them early on in the design process. We actually, you know, proposed a few things, and they said, we don't really like that. And we said, well, you know, what do you guys want to see here? And they said, we really like stormwater wetlands. So we're providing a stormwater wetland, and it actually provides a second level of water quality treatment after the bioretention, so they run in series. And we are providing native and adept of landscaping. I think, you know, one of the key landscaping features is that we're providing a heavily landscaped berm along John Simpson, which, you know, I think benefits both ways. It screens the view from the street, and it also screens the view for the residents of the street. So we're providing, you know, we have that 100-foot setback, and we're providing a heavily landscaped berm in that area. Our next slide here, I have the architecture and the amenities, and at this point, I guess I could introduce Kevney to talk about, a little bit about the townhomes and the amenity packages and the architectural features.
Excuse me, before we go into architecture, just have a question going back to structure and infrastructure. On the chart that was given, now we're talking about energy and demand on the substation. When, and I think it's going 2,500 megawatts. If I'm reading this correctly. When was that calculated? Was that back in early 2000s? Was that current calculation?
So you're looking at...
The SEACR assessment summary?
Down towards the bottom, the third from the box is impact on energy.
Impact on energy. They're talking about 2,500 megawatt hours per year, which is saying that it has no impact on the substation. When was that data calculated, or that estimated?
I'd need to check with our planning department on that statistic. I would need to think we took a look at it. It was probably studied in 96 for the overall project, because that's a pretty high threshold that this project would...
That's my concern, because we have 63 units, and 50% of those units' residents have EVs. It's something now to relook at, you know, in early stages, but you can get back to it.
Okay.
I have a question too on the same report. The traffic, I know this is in 1996 that was done, and in 2022 it was looked at again. It hasn't changed since 2020, since 96?
Well, it's, I mean, a lot of things have changed since 1996. There's been, you know, roadway improvements, other things. So we did traffic counts to reestablish the baseline. We studied the two intersections that are directly adjacent to the project entrance, and then we went beyond that one additional intersection in all directions. And we found, I think I've got the statistics in the table here, that we were going to generate 24 a.m. trips, 31 p.m. trips, 34 Saturday trips, and we took a look at the level of services, and we found that, well, comparing the current conditions, I think there was only one change from level of service B to C at a signalized intersection, which is considered a minor impact at a signalized intersection, and it also was at level C before improvements were made for the golf course project. So nothing we're doing here exceeds the thresholds from 96, and just looking at... and just looking at today's standards, they are all acceptable, you know, level of service. There was actually only one level of service change and that was only in a PM hour as well.
And Vicki, I wanted them to demonstrate that that includes the golf course, so all the traffic from the golf course is still included in their assessments.
So do I agree...
The only concern is it's sixty townhomes, so it's like another hundred and twenty cars, basically. And what are we considering a trip? What's a trip? I mean, is that, you're saying it's twenty-four AM trips? I mean, I live in that area, so I could say the school bus is almost twenty-four trips of their own. But what's a trip? What are we considering a trip?
A trip is just a, it's a trip during the peak hour, so the AM peak hour. I don't, don't remember the exact timeframe we studied, but you usually study a two-to-three-hour period and we, you know, establish those parameters when we scoped the study.
Vicki, the trips are based on the types of uses that exist. So just like a townhouse generates X amount of water or sewer, based on the standards that apply to traffic generation, it generates one-point-three trips per peak hour per unit, something like that. So that's the, the metric that's incorporated into their traffic analysis. It's based on this national standard of what a townhouse generates in terms of a trip. A trip is somebody driving a car. So the twenty-four peak hour trips includes people driving in and people driving out. My comment earlier is that that's not a particularly significant level of trip generation. Normally, when you get over a hundred trips an hour, that, that's the trigger for typically being a significant impact. This is less than a significant impact. It's not that it's not an impact. So once we know that number, we look at how it affects the intersections and that's, as Chris explained to you, they're still operating at very good levels of service.
So I'm not sure how to read that where it says nineteen ninety-six project. So the eighty-seven weekday AM trips and then the current project, does that add twenty-four to the golf course trips at eighty-seven? So then you are at, what, a hundred and eleven?
Right, those eighty-seven trips...
Are now part of the existing roadway condition.
Right, and we're adding twenty-four, which seems a little low with, you know, sixty units, but, you know.
So if you remember where this project started, there was some conversation about eliminating components of the golf course. That's not the case. That's why I wanted the applicant to be clear, all of that remains intact.
So then no changes to Simpson Road or Fair Street or anything, right? I mean, based on what the traffic study is now, it's just going to stay as it is?
No, we're not proposing any changes to the roadways.
I have another question though, on one of the, and maybe it was a July twenty, twenty-twenty-two proposal, it included a pool for the town of Carmel in addition to the pool that's on the site for the, for the residents.
I don't recollect ever having a pool for the...
Yeah, it's on... Here, planning board applications. The proposal to construct sixty-unit townhomes with a bathhouse and pool for residents in the town of Carmel to replace an underutilized two-hundred-and-seventy-one space surface parking lot.
Oh, it just meant that the project is in the town of Carmel, not a pool for the town of Carmel. I guess I could have, I could have worded that better.
Right, but then in this, in the next one, it says an additional pool, that's why I'm asking. There's going to be another pool, which is on the, on the, on the plan. So there is no pool for the town of Carmel, right?
No.
And just I wanted to raise one other point about traffic impacts. When this project first came to you, a portion of the units were on Fair Street with two intersections on Fair Street. We found that to be objectionable and problematic. The applicant modified that and eliminated that. Again, this project's been kicking around for so long, I don't want you to lose track of how it's evolved over time. So there were identified traffic impacts, we found them early. You directed the applicant to make those changes, they've made those changes. So again, that's just how this has been evolving.
I'd like to talk a little bit more about the electrical usage. Someone brought up the...
Anthony brought it up.
Anthony brought up the EVs. I'm scratching my head about nineteen ninety-six versus today beyond just EVs. So, for example, was the original plan for gas stoves inside? Is it now electrical stoves inside? I wonder if you can comment broadly about the electrical configuration and usage.
Sure. Sorry, Kevin Moses with Toll Brothers. Thank you for your time and consideration this evening. I'll touch on just the EVs really quickly. So I would assume that New York stats are probably pretty similar to Connecticut, but in Connecticut, there is one-point-one-nine percent of all total vehicles on the road in Connecticut are electric. So that just goes to show you how many people out there are actually driving these things. But in our communities, no matter if we offer an electrical vehicle charging station in every unit, it's never more than ten percent of the people that select it. So just wanted to, for context, throw that out there. As far as electric inside the home itself, as some of you may be aware, there is a potential moratorium coming down from Albany, starting in twenty-twenty-six for all new residential construction under three stories. That being said, we will have an all-electric infrastructure solution if we are required to do so by the state. Otherwise, we would seek gas for certain parts of our utility composition.
So assuming it's all electrical and assuming you're going to offer some EV, you're saying you're going to be offering some EV charging stations?
They would be offered, but again, it's never more than ten percent of the people that actually select it.
Well, I, I remember seeing a statistic that a one or two-bank commercial charging station is worth the electrical usage of a thousand-unit apartment building. So, I don't know, I'm just...
There is some additional infrastructure.
What I'm, what I'm getting at is, I'm, I'm scratching my head around this. There has to be some change from nineteen ninety-six to now in terms of what your projected use is and does it affect the supply that's available? That's my concern.
Just want to confirm that there's no extra demand. I mean, the percentage that you're talking about now in two thousand and twenty-four, I'm sure are going to significantly increase by two thousand and thirty.
Potentially.
All right, I mean, the trend.
See what appetite is.
And, and, you know, engineers design for this all the time. Let's just confirm that, should these units be all electric and should there be an increased demand in EV that we had to cover?
Yeah, and typically, we'll, we'll do that coordination with the local utility companies. They'll tell us if there's a capacity issue. They'll tell us if, based upon our demand, that improvements would be required. Typically, having done a lot of these developments throughout Westchester County, even with EV chargers, there are not necessary upgrades to existing infrastructure. You really have to meet a certain threshold to, to eclipse that.
So ju- just to clarify for me, are you saying there, as, as constructed now or as planned now, if it's constructed now, there is no impact on the electrical demand?
We, from everything we've gathered from the utility company, there's capacity.
I'm, I'm sorry to say...
Everything we've gathered from the utility company, there's capacity.
Is there any comfort that we should be asking for in the documentation?
As opposed to electric supply has never been a dependent. It's a cost, it's a cost to the people that are operating their connections to the electrical network as opposed to our concerns about sewer water. It's only so big it can't go any larger than that. Developers can facilitate the, the connections to the electrical network. It's not as though there's a, there's an inadequate supply in this region.
So I think what he's asking is can, can NICE supply the electric that's required? Is what I think he's asking.
That's what Kevin is saying, that they believe they have adequate capacity. What NICE occasionally says is, we have, we make enough electricity, getting it to your site needs through your power poles and an upgrade.
That's why I was asking about the substation capacity.
So, so again, should we get some written comfort about substation capacity? Okay. Okay.
It would be foolhardy for the applicant to go down this road and find out they don't have adequate capacity. So I'm sure they're doing their utilities with respect to that, knowing that that will be required for this approval, but they need some sort of letter.
I couldn't say it any better myself.
Thank you.
I believe you're going to take us through the...
Sure.
We can come back to any of the utility questions.
All righty, again, Kevin Moses, Toll Brothers. So just give you a couple highlights on the architecture here. You know, Toll Brothers, I think, has a very good reputation locally. We, we make a nice product. And for this project, we've got sixty-three-bedroom townhomes proposed. They are two and a half stories, two thousand to twenty-four hundred square feet. Both offerings for one and two-car garages. They're contemporary open floor plans with flex spaces, just reflecting shifting market demands post-COVID and then in the new environment we live in today. There's both master up and master down floor plans to help appeal to a wide demography of people. We anticipate that there will be many fifty-five and older individuals interested in this community purely because of the adjacent golf course and assumed lifestyle that comes along with it. You know, there is some overlap between this product and those of another project we're working on in town at Overlook. However, this is differentiated to reflect our projected buyer demography, as I said. The types of homes are of similar ilk quality and materiality and there's a mixed media on the facades to promote architectural interest. See a mix of two different siding materials, some nice roof penetrations and differentiations in the facades, again, all to create architectural interest.
What kind of siding is it?
So same as we are building over at Overlook, which is a mix of vinyl siding and board and battened composite siding and similar window packages and materials, et cetera. I did bring a few samples for you of the things I can fit through the door, excluding garage doors and doors themselves.
Are the vertical finishes the composite?
Yeah, so that's board and batt.
Just pull this up for you here. So this will show generally just the realm of our specifications.
But the, the board and batten is a composite product. PVC, if you will, so. And that's just a trim sample, siding sample. I've also got a single sample if it's of interest, but standard stuff.
And what will be vinyl?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
What, what is going to be vinyl?
The horizontal siding is vinyl. And then the vertical is, again, some type of composite.
Is this the color that it will be?
That's what we're proposing, but, you know, we're happy to consider options. If you guys are looking for something different, you know, white and gray are certainly in right now. I think it meets the widest array of, of potential buyers.
Will the buyer have a choice of color or it's, you're only going to offer whatever?
Typically, well, well, you know, in my opinion, at least, I think in Toll's parlance as well, we like consistency in our communities. So at present, we'd propose one color.
Yeah. I mean, if it was a little bit different, a little less connected, you may offer colors, but in fact, I would agree.
Cool.
To keep it in a two-tone.
And I'll just touch on the amenity as well. We've got a luxury pool, pool house, bath house, passive use. We've got trails and obviously the golf course being next door serves as a secondary amenity to these users as well.
So the picture of the pool here is not the same as the pool that...
Correct, but it's indicative of the level of finish and quality.
Can we use that one? That's a nicer one.
Sure is. If we have more space, I'd love to do it.
Are you leaning to a rectangular pool?
Yes, as shown on the site plan. But level of finish and detail will, will be somewhere.
So all, is it, so the rendering here, is this the vaulted ceiling? Is that what the kitchens will all have or is that just a...
It depends. That, that, in some of the plans, there are larger, like mezzanines with two-story spaces, others there are not. So it just depends on the individual unit. But certainly what is in there as far as finishes is indicative of what we would offer. There's also different levels of finish on the interior. The exteriors are largely set in stone, right? But interiors, people have a little bit more room to play.
Is this a thirty-year shingle?
Sorry?
Is this a thirty-year shingle?
It's a darn good question.
That's what I was looking, I couldn't notice.
GAF is a very reputable company, I presume it would be, but... Twenty-eight and a half? If it's not on there, I'm happy to get back to you.
It says twenty-five years stain goes across, but that's not the life of the shingle, yeah.
Sure I can find that out.
The left, the left-hand unit, the entrance on the side.
Yes, sir. That's absolutely correct. End units are side, side entry.
How much of York's space do these units have, if any?
It varies, every unit will have a patio in the back, minimum of, of ten by twelve.
Spanish patio, no, they have to cut the grass or anything, otherwise that could be grass backed.
So this will all be managed by an HOA, condominium structure. So they would take care of, obviously, all communal spaces and maintenance obligations.
Will there be any basements with these or are these all like slab-on-grade?
They will have basements, yes.
And trash is picked up in bins or do they put it out in front of the house?
Private trash collection and, and it would be obviously within the, the homes themselves. No centralized trash collection.
So the garbage truck is going to drive down each of those roads twice a week?
I only have my trash picked up once a week.
We do twice a week here.
Twice a week and once a side...
So it's three times.
Oh, wow.
We actually have, we actually have three times.
Each person's going to have their own garbage values.
That's correct.
But you're having private cargo?
Uh, I, that was my understanding, but we would be open to having the town do it.
We would, yeah, it's nature way typically, you know, you guys...
And mail too?
Yeah. Uh, there is actually centralized mail, I take that back.
So there'll be one mail station everybody goes out to?
You got it, a mail kiosk, so to speak.
So...
That was one of my questions, so that's what...
Amazon too?
Sorry?
Should we put in an Amazon pickup for delivery?
I have never been asked that question before.
You see it in a lot of communities nowadays, a station, just like Central Mail.
Interesting.
Central, Amazon, Amazon puts it in the locker. Residents come home, they go to the locker, they pick it up.
Interesting. We have not started to integrate that in our communities. We typically see them drop off at the individual residences, but...
Keeps them from the driveway.
Anthony, that's actually an interesting question. If, if I'm a lazy Amazon driver and I see a Central Mail kiosk, I'm just dumping the package there and not putting, so now they have piles of packages at the same... We should think about that. If they need to provide for that. Yeah, it's actually interesting, right? We should think about that.
I don't see an issue with it. It's, it's not in our typical operation standard, but I'm, I'm open to talk about it.
Where is the centralized mail? Is it near the pool?
So...
That's correct, it's, it's just to plan that.
Okay. Which would make sense, right?
Approximate to the parking area there, so. But, you know, this is a really neat opportunity. Obviously, there's an existing parking lot there to be able to infill that area with sixty beautiful townhomes with a nice recreational amenity, immediately adjacent to a golf course and be able to, I think, as far as we see it, provide resiliency to an existing local business. And that's a huge benefit.
So any changes to be made to the golf club itself?
No.
So no restaurant improvement, just that small little restaurant?
No, in fact, correct. The relocated parking.
David, there was Centennial Golf Club. There are two holes that got slightly shortened. So one on Lakes is, it comes from par five to par four and the back tee on One Meadows got shortened as well.
So when you redo the parking lot then to move it over to the town of Southeast, I know there's no disruption to the golf itself, but what about the parking? Are they going to build the new one before they start building, you know, start moving the old one out of there?
You are thinking ahead and I like it. So we are building the new golf cor... I'm sorry, the new golf course parking first so that we maintain... I'm sorry, the new golf course parking first so that we maintain compliance with current parking. Yeah, exactly. Very good question.
Can you go back to the condominium structure? The townhome homes themselves will be condos as opposed to just the exterior land? How does it how does it work?
So yeah, just think of, you know, your typical like single family home, right? It's got a property boundary around it. In a condominium structure, there's only one property boundary and that's the master community, so to speak. And then the homes fall within that. So the owners don't own the land, they own the homes that lie on top of it.
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
The 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 future buyers would not own the land. They own the homes on top of the land.
And the share of the land?
Correct.
Like, so if there's 36 units, each person owns 136 of the total?
Precisely.
Sort of looking back at effects of this, I know it'll be connected to town water and sewer. Do we have sufficient water capacity over there in that district?
I thought Pat answered that.
So we've spent a lot of time dealing with this. There is adequate capacity. The issue was making sure the the water line was looped for this project. So there are now two alternative loop options for the applicant, one of which requires an easement through private property. That's our preferred option. If that is, if the applicant's unable to secure that easement, there's a second option that still provides a loop. It's not quite as beneficial as the initial loop, but it is satisfactory to the engineering department and the capacity is sufficient to accommodate these units. So I think it's about 20,000 gallons a day. That's what I was alluding to earlier where that capacity is not overwhelming our system one way or another. So the answer is yes, there's adequate capacity and the loop system, which we fight for all the time, the applicant's able to accommodate that after a lot of work.
Rich has spent weeks and months working with Centennial on the water loop in particular. And how about the wastewater and waste?
Same thing, equivalent amounts and and we have the capacity to accommodate it. But no loops.
Yeah, right, yes.
So you mentioned has they will have basements. Are there walkout basements or?
There might be a couple walkout units on here based on the grading plan, but it's primarily all standard basement units.
Where's the laundry facilities in within the townhomes? Are they on the first floor in the basement?
Wow, another great question. It's not stuff I'm.
You're moving in?
So take for example our Brearly unit. The laundry is on the first floor. Just after the entry from the garage. Clayburn, second floor. And what I'm seeing on these plans is that typically where the primary bedroom is located, the laundry follows. So depending on if it's master up or master down.
Other thoughts, other questions?
I think we'll have to a good start.
Yeah, this has been years, a long time. So what we really need to decide tonight is if if we're going to, if there's going to be a negative declaration or a positive declaration, right?
And again, Mr. Chairman, just to summarize where we are, either way, the applicant's already done the analyses for both traffic studies and and all of that information is essentially what the applicant's produced for you. So the analyses are done. It's it's a matter of process and procedure. So the negative declaration is a process you're quite familiar with. If you chose to go in that direction, you would direct us to prepare a draft of a negative declaration. You can review that and determine if it's satisfactory. If it's not, you have the option of going to POSDEC. If you don't even want to consider that, the positive declaration is available to you. What that would do is require them to prepare the environmental impact statement, essentially the same book with a different cover. It would add two components to the process, one of which is an evaluation of alternatives. There aren't a lot of alternatives with respect to this, that's their site and this is what Toll Brothers wants to build on their site. So yeah, it could be slight modifications to the configuration and layout, but that's what you do during the site plan approval process anyway. That's the normal process. So an EIS gives you the opportunity to consider alternatives and it provides a more robust public involvement, public participation process. It's more defined by law. You would still have public hearings for your site plan, even with a NEGDEC. You'd still have a public public hearings. They're more formalized public hearings with an EIS. So that's really the difference between the two processes. The other complicating piece to this, part of this project requires an adjacent municipality to grant approval. You've already designated your intent to lead agency Southwest, Southeast has not objected to that. So you're in charge from a seeker perspective, you're in charge, you're in charge for them as well with regard to this project.
A lot of the POSDEC work was done in 1996 though.
We did, they, Centennial, did a full environmental impact statement.
So I think that's important to.
Yeah, and again, remember that was a project that took an old dairy farm and turned it into a golf course. That was lots of clearing land, lots of grading and so forth. So all of those big impacts occurred 50 years, 40 years ago. And this is again, as I indicated earlier, 24 additional peak hour trips, 20,000 gallons of additional sewer and water. That's the incremental impact of this project. And it's just something different that we never anticipated in this property before. That's that's what's different.
If we ask you to prepare a NEGDEC, we get to review it and we feel there's nothing, there's something major missing change.
Yeah, if the analysis wasn't deep enough.
Before we even do that though, this is just a question, I know we're lead agency. Should we get the feedback from Southeast if there's going to be a problem? Because if there's a problem with the parking lot, then we have.
Yeah, so have you appeared before Southeast at all?
We did appear in front of Southeast. We gave them a presentation and we basically said, once we're through Seeker and Carmo, we'll we'll come back with an update, so.
Were they smiling at you? Did they give you a reaction?
Yeah, I mean, I didn't, I don't remember any opposition to our application.
And Anthony, we can reach out to them as well to find out.
And anything that we 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 put into place is subject to that approval, obviously.
Right, it's both have to be approved simultaneously, so yeah. So we can reach out to the town as well.
And Southeast can't issue their approval until we get through Seeker, so that's why we're kind of waiting to go back.
And they can't build the buildings until the new parking lot's built so they can park there. So there's a whole loop that's going to be put in the order.
Absolutely. And remember, they can't get DEP to sign off on this until we finish Seeker first, so Seeker has to happen now.
So Pat, just if we can go back a step, so I'm clear on the POSDEC versus negative declaration. What I'm hearing you say is that other than the alternatives and the more formalized public process, the the information we would get is already here.
The analysis would be identical.
And and the main change components, which were the sewer and water, we've already dealt with.
Correct.
So once all the approvals and everything is in place, what's the timeline? What do you foresee it becoming a real, you know, shovel in the ground project?
DEP is going to be a lengthy process. Having worked with them in the past and working with them on two projects now, it will be arduous and it will be lengthy. We'll be on that Ferris wheel for months. I would say with a guarantee. So I think they will take eight or 10 months to get through potentially. If we were so lucky to get negative declaration in advance towards site plan, I know that process will take some time as well. So we'll have to work through that. So kind of largely contingent on when we can get all requisite approvals, unappealable requisite approvals complete. From that point, and depending on what time of year, because we want to induce as few disturbances to the golf course as possible. It's a timing of year is going to play a part. We've got to build that parking lot first before we even start any of these homes. 60 units is not a huge project for us. My guess is it would be, you know, three plus years, two and a half to three plus years is my guess.
Start it and then completion what, in five years maybe?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I was saying, once we start the project, you know, two and a half, three plus years to to complete it. As far as approvals, you know, there's wood to chop, so.
Would you sell units as you're building out other units? Would you do this in phases? Would you, how would you, what do you anticipate?
So small job, very efficient little road network. We'll also need to discuss phasing with DEP. They typically like to see smaller chunks at a time, so we'll have to work through that with them. We do sell as as we go. We also do sell some homes on spec. But certainly sell as we go. And then we do have some QMI models, quick move in, that are typically offered that don't necessarily have commitments immediately. That's a kind of a new strategy we've taken in the post COVID world. But we are a risk averse home builder and obviously don't want to get out over our skis. So we do try to, you know, sell and build to the extent feasible.
What's the name of the development going to be?
It's a good question.
That's four, boy.
That's another good question, yeah.
I'm not coming next meeting, it's okay.
Interestingly enough, our CEO, again of a Fortune 500 company, is involved in every community, gets a finger on it. And the name of a community goes all the way up the line and that typically happens much later in the process. Once we know we're kind of getting through the approvals and the project might be real, so. Yeah, and road naming and all that stuff, so.
Folks want to discuss anything about the NEGDEC or POSDEC?
I guess I'm not perceiving the benefit of a POSDEC from a practical point of view.
I think we've done bigger developments without a POSDEC. I think in this case, 1996, a lot of the work was provided. And also the last four years or so, I guess we've been working on this with traffic studies. At the end of the day, we're putting up 60 townhomes. We've done done that many times over.
Yeah, if you were a novice board that was unfamiliar with projects of this scale, the POSDEC probably helps you. You've been down this road before.
I think that two and a half to three year timeline that was just outlined goes to three to four years. And I don't think that does any of us any any good personally.
And the fact that if there's something in there we don't agree with, we can?
Yeah, we're still getting another shot at it.
We still have to go through public here.
Just looking at it and I I think, I mean, I read everything that we got. I mean, I'm comfortable going with a negative declaration.
So Pat, would you prepare a NEGDEC?
A draft of a NEGDEC for you, you can then evaluate it and see if it's suitable. And if it's, if you find it deficient, you can always reconsider the decision. Acceptable?
Yes.
Okay.
I've got my marching orders.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you so much, Board. Thank you for hearing us, listening to us and staying with us through the process.
Nice job. This is going to be exciting for the community.
Likewise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job pushing buttons, that's great.
Thank you for the power, of course. It was good for the people on TV too. Okay, next on the agenda, Yankee Land Development, Bayberry Hill Road and Owen Drive, extension of final subdivision approval, two lots.
You're back.
I've been back for 14 years. Hi, I'm Ed Delaney from Bevo Associates.
Mike, no comments from you on this, right?
Not for the extension, right?
Yes, for extension. And Pat, would you summarize Rich's comments, if you have them?
I don't have Rich's comments on this, I apologize. I don't, I'd be surprised if he had comments, did he, Ray?
Rich, no.
I got two comment letters from Richard.
Summarizing, it's unclear if the applicant addressed comments from a prior memos. He's repeating all the issues that he has required for these projects.
This is the big one, though, right?
It's both, actually. So he's not speaking about the extension itself. He's talking about the conditions that were linked to both approvals. So he doesn't have any comment about the extension.
Well, he does, the first sentence. The engineering department does not have any objection to granting 100.
You're right, I didn't read the first sentence.
That's all I read, it's the first sentence.
So my only comments, we're we're doing, we have both projects continually before you. So you originally approved the 14 lot plan. The applicant has come back to you and said, we don't want to build the 14 lot plan, we want to do two lots. That's what we want to do, but they're continuing to try to keep the 14 lot plan alive. So at some point in time, it's kind of fisher cut bait with respect to the projects, which is it? Is it the 14 lot plan or the two lot plan? To me, it doesn't make sense to keep both alive. I think the applicant has an incentive to keep both alive just to keep his options open. But I think from our perspective, pick pick one. You have a response to that?
The applicant, the owner really, really hasn't decided. He's been aggressively marking the property, both as a whole, two lots and 14 lots. And apparently it hasn't been going too well. So he's made the reapplication for the extension, paid his $2,500 for both concepts and requests another six months. But you know, as I'm getting older here, this and and listening to his voice on this, this is coming to an end. It's cut bait or whatever you want to do. He's also asked me recently to look at alternatives for the site.
What could be alternatives?
We we have opportunities that are in the residential subdivision zone for multifamily elderly, things like that. But we, his real intent was to try and stay this, these are single family homes on four to 10 acres. And it's the price of developing it versus what he has to charge for the houses doesn't really qualify in that that part of the town. So some costs have to come down, alternatives have to be looked at, but for now, he's asking for another six months.
I don't really see anything changing in the next six months. I think six months ago, we had the same conversation.
Yeah, I mean, again, as Ed said, he's been before you 14 years now for the for the 14 lot plan. If you were to grant the extension to the two lot plan, the two lots can come back. I think intention is to sell one of those two lots and have somebody come in with a seven lot subdivision. So it's not as though you're foreclosing the opportunity for the 14 lots. Somebody would have to come back before you to regain that approval. But you give it to them because you already gave it to them with the 14 lot approval. The form, if you continue to approve the 14 lot, I suppose you could, like, they're trying to avoid all the fees and expense associated with filing the 14 lot, the rec fees, bond bonds, that sort of stuff. They would have to do that, pay all that money and then if they chose to sell fewer lots, you could merge lots, but that doesn't get them away from paying all that money. You could help them by not approving that, he doesn't pay the money anymore, he's got the two lots, problem solved.
Pat, what's the downside for us in granting the extension?
It's interesting that there really isn't a downside because you've already approved the 14 lot. So if you came back with one of the two lots and tried to get seven and seven, it would be hard for you to deny that. So there's really no downside other than expensive, the exercise of coming back before you and then asking again.
I just, I just have an issue that we keep proving this every six months. Like you said, you gotta make a decision sooner or later.
So you've you've made it clear you're uncomfortable with unlimited extensions.
Absolutely.
In this instance, you're granting double unlimited extensions. So maybe I'm more comfortable with one of them continuing to grant some extensions in the future. But doing both is is a little bit problematic.
Well, could we could we grant the the 180 days noting that when you come back in six months, you need to come back with a decision?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. You can give them a warning, this is your last chance and we'll give you both, but in six months, you're only going to get one.
Right, or or based on your your explanation, Pat, if I heard you correctly, it would be more user friendly for the applicant if we were going to only approve once, approve the two lot application. Be easier to come back.
They came back, that's what they asked for. Remember, they said we can't do the 14, give us two. So that was their idea, not.
We can put it to Ed by approving the two. We can put it to that by approving the two.
But they were doing the two so that they could do two sevens and market it as a seven, and then a seven later. It wasn't to do two, two big monster lots.
We always did prefer the subdivision.
So if the board is going to deny the extension, the board has to look at the record before. You really have nothing from the applicant in support of the extension. So my suggestion to the applicant would be, if you're going to come back before another extension based on what the board has said, there needs to be a substantial factual basis for the request. A simple generic, I want to keep both approvals alive, is not going to cut it. I think that's what I'm hearing from the board.
I can tell the applicant that. To beware. Next February.
Is this a re-grant or an extension?
It's an extension.
All right, so the re-grant is the one that is more difficult. That's where we re-review. Your extension is almost by right.
You still have to give a reason for it.
Oh, agreed, but I'm just saying, but the next one, if they change the code, which we're working on now, it may be subject to the new code, too, so they may have another issue.
That's actually a good point.
Which then we would just give the extension and know you're coming back in six months, as Joe said, with a detail of what we're going, where we're going.
Yeah, I'm kind of in that can't give a final warning at this point.
That's a case of both these applications.
We would have to extend both, based on that dialogue.
And the re-grant would be in six months when...
You have to check to see how many extensions these are. So I think you have two extensions and a re-grant, two extensions.
We must be close to a re-grant. We must be close to a re-grant, right?
I'm not sure. But I'm worried because it's not a re-grant, so.
So we'll have to treat them individually.
Yes, so what we're talking about right now is Yankee Land Development, Bayberry Hill Road and Owen Drive for an extension of final subdivision approval, two lots.
Yes, she said extension of the final, correct. The two lot was one.
Right. So we need a motion with that, with the, what Joe added in.
So moved.
No, no, you need to read that.
Okay. I move the extension, the final subdivision approval for two lots, Yankee Land Development, Bayberry Hill Road and Owen Drive.
I'll second. When they come back, though, we want to note that when they come back, they need to have...
You have to put that in the motion that's relaying that to this board.
Okay.
We can put that in the minutes.
Yes, it'll be in the minutes and...
Right, if we can, it's an important point.
Yeah.
And I'd like to have that in a little written thing from Rose.
It'll be in the minutes.
Okay.
So we need a second.
Ray's seconding.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. Yankee Land Development, Bayberry Hill Road and Owen Drive, extension of preliminary subdivision approval, 14 lots.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
See you on Valentine's Day.
Yes, Rose will have that in the minutes.
Great.
And then you can take that forward.
I'll give her a call tomorrow.
Yeah, it's time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good night, now.
Rose distributed the minutes of July 24th and August 8th. Has anyone had an opportunity to review them?
Mr. Chairman, I reviewed both sets of minutes, and I am pleased to report I had no comments.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.